Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So, the board, you have, let's see, can we have roll call, please?
Here.
Madsen.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
McKenna.
Fletcher.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Karen, do we need to take a motion to excuse Mike? All right, well, Mike will, Mike McKenna will not be here tonight, so I will make a motion to excuse him from this Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, support?
No, I support from Derek. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, non-opposed. All right, so we can move on. Next, we have approval of agenda. You have that before you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
All right, I have a motion. And I have support. Do I have any discussion, any amendments to the agenda? All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-opposed, the agenda is approved. Going forward, we have public comment. And again, public comment is for items that are on the agenda. Copies of the agenda are out on the table, if you didn't get one when you came in. And at this time, if you do make a comment for something on the agenda, if you'd please stand at the podium, give your name and address, and we'd obviously like to hear what you, what your comments are, so. Do I have anybody stepping forward with comments? George? Supervisor Colas.
Well, do I need to? I'm not quite that sure. Is it picking me up, okay? Okay. Oh. Okay. George Colas, 601 East Maple Street. On your agenda, you'll see where you have, the chair is stepping down from her position as the chair. And I just wanted to tell you, Pam called my office several weeks ago, asked that she could meet with Karen and I. We met with her, and she wanted to do this. We had this conversation with her. And tonight, I just wanted to tell you, tell you personally, thank you for your service in that position. She's going to stay on the board.
Thank you.
And I give her all the credit in the world for stepping up and making this decision. And I want to thank you very much for the service you've given and the continued service you're going to be, because your knowledge is invaluable to us. And we appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so moving forward, we have no public hearings. We have approval over the minutes, and these would be the minutes from September the 5th, 2023. I didn't see anything with the minutes that came, popped out at me, but...
I move that we accept them as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell.
Support?
Support from Derek Burton. Do we have any discussion? All right, if I could have, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. All right, minutes are approved. We don't have any communications. And then, on the agenda, our first order of business is the resignation as the chair position. And you did receive in your packet my letter. And I'd like to explain why I want to step down. I have a very hard time hearing. I do wear hearing aids. And when, and at the last meeting, and at a couple meetings, I've struggled very hard sometimes to hear just when somebody steps up, if you look away, motion, or, you know, talking or commotion in a, in a meeting. It's very difficult. And it is a disability, something I've struggled with. But I don't feel that as chair, representing the township, Holly Township, or even for the board members, that it, I really should have to struggle. I should be on my best game, I guess, to say. So, I would like to remain on the board, but I do want to step aside. And I would like to make the recommendation, recommendation of Ryan Madsen to step in immediately as chair. Glenn Mitchell will stay as vice chair, and he's done a wonderful job in the past if it's a meeting that I haven't been able to attend. And I do want to thank you all, please, for your understanding and your patience, because at times it is very difficult. And also, for anybody else that struggles with any type of a disability. So, I don't know if, I don't think you need a motion or anything. Do you need a motion for me to step down? All right?
I would make a motion that we accept your resignation as chairman, just as chairman, and Ryan Madsen is taking over as the next chair.
All right.
Support?
Okay, I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion on that?
My only point with that is that it's two different things on the agenda, so do they have to be two separate? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
That will have a time without a chairman, though.
Yeah. So, it is my resignation, all right?
So, I'll move for your resignation first.
Yep, and I will support that.
Do you need a roll call on that, or can we just do a? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed?
Now, I move that Ryan Madsen take over as chairman of the Planning Commission.
All right.
Support?
All right, so we have support and the appointment. And all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. So, with that, I think you'll do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And again, thank you all for your patience and understanding. Shall we switch chairs?
I think that we have to, if I'm now the chair, as awkward as that is. Excuse us all while we waddle around back and forth here. Thank you.
Yeah.
They'll not know who they are if you don't do that.
Well, first off, thank you all for the opportunity and trust for me to have this important position. And I look to continue to serve you all and the community in the, in the best of my capacity, so, thank you. Moving along, and then, just so I'm clear, because I didn't make up the agenda, for the continued business as it is now, they're not things that necessarily need a vote or action. Is it just for information at this point, Karen? Okay, thank you. So, next order of business would be old business, the master plan review and update.
Hey, everybody. Nani Wolf here from McKenna Associates. I'm going to be giving your master plan presentation slash working group today. And it's going to be two parts. So, part of it's going to be a catch-up presentation, because the master plan is a long process, and I want to make sure we're all on the same page. And then, we're going to get into some, you know, worksheets and group work activities and those sorts of things. And I do anticipate that this will be sort of a long presentation, so I'm planning to take a break in the middle so that you all can get some water and stretch and do whatever else you need to do. But I'm actually going to stand up there, and John's going to click through for me, since you'll all be facing that way, anyway. So, let's get to it. Yeah. Oh, sure, yeah. Forgot this was movable. All right, thanks, everybody. So, in front of you, you should all have a copy of the future land use map, as well as a highlighter and a pen. Is that correct? Thumbs up if you have it. Okay, great. And then, we'll be passing out the worksheets at the later portion. But let's get started. So, we are back today to talk about the master plan. This master plan update was primarily focused on housing. That was really the point of this update. You know, the other aspects of the township, such as the road network and the natural features, haven't changed as much, but housing is changing pretty rapidly, every five years. So, that's what we're going to get into today. John, can you go to the next slide? Okay, great. So, this is our quick agenda for today. We're going to start with a review of what you got last time, then the goals and policies related to housing, covering a little bit of the land use parts of the plan as they pertain to housing, and then get into the new information. And I'm planning to take a little break right there. So, in your October packets, you all got the housing data chapter from 2016. And as a reminder, that data that you saw in your homework packet was the 2016 version. And earlier this year, we covered some of those data updates under our demographic seminar. So, I'm going to start off with a few of those, just as a reminder. Next slide, John. All right, from last time. So, these were the main takeaways from our last seminar in demographics. And the housing ones that I'd like to highlight are, one, Holly Township, like all of Michigan, is an aging region, and aging-in-place housing is increasingly important. And two, that the values in Holly Township of housing are increasing, but housing costs are as well. So, as you can see, in 2016, there was not a lot of projected growth in Holly Township. You probably reviewed that in your packet. You know, it seemed like it was leveling off. But since then, you can see that Holly Township's trajectory has dramatically changed from where it was five years ago. So, five years ago, we were expecting kind of these two to converge and then level off together. But Holly Township is now projected to continue increasing while the village stabilizes. So, go ahead to the next one, John. And this is some Snapchat information about that. So, today, your housing is growing at roughly the same rate as the population, which is very good. It means you're meeting the demand of your housing stock. And the median home price is on par with the county. This means you're not facing the affordability crises that some other places in southern Oakland County are today, like Birmingham, you know, Ferndale, those sorts of places. And then, you have a pretty average number of people per house. All right, next one, please, John. And then, these are the housing type changes that we saw from 2010 to 2020. So, biggest increases were in these non-single-family housing types, going in the township, very little change in duplex overall, and then very little change in single-family detached as well. All right, so, this is the full list of the goals and policies that were included in the 2016 master plan. And I've highlighted in green the ones that are pertinent to housing. So, the first one here is community character. So, how housing contributes to Holly as a nice place to live. Second one is environmental. So, how housing interacts with the natural environment, whether new construction is eroding it or enhancing it. Then, land use. Housing is the, one of the critical land uses in Holly Township. Roughly 21% of the land in the township is single-family housing. The second biggest category is recreation land, which I think you'd all expect. It's like 28% or something like that is state recreation land. And then, the, you know, next one, quite obviously, is residential. So, this is the goal and policy that focuses on making sure that Holly Township has residential neighborhoods that enhance the community vision. And we're going to come back to these later. I don't expect you to be reading through them right now. I just wanted to highlight them before we get into the rest of the plan. So, on this page, I also want to highlight infrastructure. So, in Holly Township, as you know, there's only limited areas that are served by water and sewer and the other forms of infrastructure that can support higher-density housing. So, considering infrastructure is a critical part of considering housing overall. All right, next slide, please, John. And then, last one, sustainability. So, this one really goes with the natural environment, in that Holly Township is praised, and I think appreciated, by the people that live here for being a rural community in up north Oakland County. And as a part of that, keeping, you know, a keen eye on the resilience and longevity of those natural resources is going to be key to developing business and keeping Holly a nice place to live. All right, so now, getting into the housing and land use parts of the plan. This is the existing land use map. So, this is the map of what land is being used for today. And I'm highlighting this zone, because this is the 2016 version. And as you know, there's a decent amount of new suburban construction that's been happening in this area. So, you'll see that there are some areas that are no longer vacant. So, you know, right here, this vacant parcel is now being developed. Right down here, there's some more suburban development. And these aren't the only places, but this is the main area that this new residential development has been concentrated. And, you know, I would also say, there's some, like, way up here, individual parcels that were classified as vacant before and are now single-family residential, but not to a significant enough degree that we needed to highlight them on the map today. Is this thing still working? Okay, great. Okay, perfect. Next one, please, John. So, the 2016 plan had a very, you know, defined vision for housing development, and that was concentrated housing development. So, that means concentrating housing development in one section of the township so that the views and agricultural, natural resources in the other sections of the township can be conserved. And, you know, one of the main questions we get is, why plan for concentrated development at all? And I think there's some ones that are pretty self-explanatory. So, by concentrating development in one area, you can preserve the rural character of the majority of the township, similarly with the natural beauty and resources around it. But concentrated development also has advantages when it comes to infrastructure. So, concentrating new housing and new development in one area means that you can more efficiently provide sewer services, water services, fire services to those homes. And this means that you can accommodate growth, because Holly is in demand. It's a place people want to live. It's a place young families want to move. But you can do it in a way that's controlled, right? You're not just letting people buy up one acres all over the township and develop them in, you know, haphazard fashions, or in tiny little subdivisions that kind of grow everywhere. Instead, you're concentrating it. It also allows people to have a choice in their housing type, but make a choice that meets their needs. So, in Holly Township, we're seeing an increased demand for housing, especially for young families and people who are aging in place. And that means that housing is no longer a one-size-fits-all problem. It means that people who are in the later years of their life and have a disability might be looking for a different type of housing than people who are young and have three kids right now trying to enter the Holly school system. So, this means that accommodating new housing is done in a way that can meet the needs of those different demographic groups, and also the folks in the middle, people who want just an average home, you know? And then, finally, at the bottom, maintaining a balance of age groups. So, when you have a healthy balance of age groups, you can avoid the pitfalls that so many other communities in metro Detroit have seen. So, in lots of metro Detroit, you'll see there are former subdivisions of Detroit that are now cities that have a really, really high concentration of elderly residents that are not moving out of their homes, that, because they don't have an option. They don't have a condo to move to, or an assisted-living facility to move to, or even just a smaller house to move to. So, they stay in their home, and the housing doesn't filter through the different age groups. Means you don't see an influx of young residents, because the homes aren't available. And as such, you end up with an imbalanced age population. That means that your taxes are imbalanced, your workforce is imbalanced. You end up with something that is a really dramatic and stark reality for these other communities. And by planning ahead for that, you can make sure that you have a diverse workforce, you have a diverse community, and you're meeting the needs of all those age groups. So, before we go any further, does anyone need clarification on any of these items? Okay, great. So, in the 2016, also, who was here for the 2016 plan on your? Nobody? Okay, great, then I'm glad we're doing this.
I'm glad.
Okay. Yeah, and Karen was.
Karen was here yesterday.
All right. Did anyone in the audience participate in the 2016 plan? All right, we got two. Did anyone take the survey this time around? Hey, great, I like to see it. I like to see it, thank you all. But yeah, so sending and receiving zones was the big concept in the 2016 plan. And that means planning for the areas where you want low-density development, focused on conservation of Holly's character, natural beauty, agricultural lifestyle, and then concentrate that development into receiving zones. So, yeah. Oh, sorry, I got to talk closer to it. Thank you for the reminder. All right. So, right here, you'll see in the red dotted outline, this is what was designated as the sending zones in the Holly Township plan in 2016. And these black outlines, you'll see these three, were designated as the receiving zones. Yeah, and then, this zone over here that does not have a dash down line, I just call it the non-receiving zone, or the non-selling zone. It's the neither zone. So, in this case, you're going to see it referred to as non-receiving. So, basically, the plan was to concentrate development in these receiving zones, and plan for very low development in the sending zones, and then plan for business as usual in this non-receiving zone. All right, John, can you move to the next one? And part of the reason for that is because of the reasons we just discussed for concentrated development. Holly has all of these beautiful natural features, all of these woodlands that are spread across the entire community. And planning for development in areas where there's very few of those, these three areas, can help preserve them in the township overall. And the next one, John, please?
Can you explain what is...
Sure.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
What do you mean, priority one, priority two, what?
Yes, great question. So, these are classifications used by the state of Michigan when they do the natural features inventory. Basically, priority one is like the highest-quality natural features. They've had very little man-made influence. They're usually pristine wetlands, pristine, like, mature woodlands. Priority three, you know, on the converse side, is still pretty good. Not, you know, anything to write home about necessarily, but still better than nothing. So, that's what these zones are. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And then, these, sorry, let's go back one. And these woodlands, you'll see, are actually on the future land use map in some additions. And that was to emphasize that we want to try to work around them in planning for future development. All right, John, on to the next one. Thanks. And I don't have a map for this, but the other important one is the sewer and water service. So, sewer service is only available in basically two sections of the township. One is the northeast corner, and one is the western boundary of the Village of Holly. And, you know, it's really important to consider where sewer service is available, because septic systems can have a really negative impact on a community if they get to a high enough concentration. So, septic systems, you know, in general, they're fine. But if you get to a really high concentration of septic systems, you're going to start seeing more routine failures, people having to redo their septic systems all the time, people considering expanding sewer lines out into the more rural parts of the township. And it just becomes a higher infrastructure cost for the community. The other thing is that septic systems, in some cases, when they fail, can contaminate groundwater resources that are very important for us as humans, and also wetlands and other natural features in order to function properly, and lead to E. coli contamination and other sorts of bacterial outbreaks in the community. So, keeping an eye on the distribution of septic systems and trying our best to encourage regular sewer hookups prevents these problems in the future. Yeah.
Is there a point where somebody steps in, like, state of Michigan, or, I wouldn't think EPA, but where we have to put sewer systems in? You know, where the, the septic systems aren't adequate for the density? Is there some point where you reach that? Or is that something the community decides on?
So, typically, it's community by community, or county by county, because the county health department is part of who administers septic programs. Michigan has universally considered the worst septic regulations in the country. Were actually really bad. We, the state of Michigan basically does nothing when it comes to septic systems, at least residential septic systems. So, that's why it's usually done on a county-by-county basis. But, John, do you have any other input on that?
No, I would just say, if your groundwater is contaminated, that would be a reason why we require a change of septic system.
The reason I ask, I thought years ago, the concept of Holly Township was not to allow a lot of development, because at some point, you'd have to put sewer systems, which is extremely expensive, in current residents. So, I just wondered, is there a point where you have to do that? Or, again, is it just something that we would decide, you know, at the community level somehow, that it's time to do that?
I think John's point is the correct one, which is, if a septic system contaminates a well, and a resident has no other option for their water, that's where you're going to be forced to expand your infrastructure. So, for example, I'm going to use, the city of Ann Arbor has that plume underneath it that's spreading toxins throughout the city. And every time it leaches into a new well, those citizens are forced to pay the connection fee to the city's municipal water system. And they are not happy about it. First of all, the cost. But second of all, the infrastructure is a great burden on the overall community. You know, everyone's paying for that as a collective.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, just a, a very, a very good question. Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, that we can't have the public...
Oh, sorry.
...point at this right now. During public comment. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
John, go ahead.
If I could just add one more thing. A lot of communities, a lot of townships shy away from extending utilities to water and sewers, because a lot of time, it, it, it puts additional pressure for growth, right? So, you know, you're not going to encourage growth. But in this case, the two receiving areas, two of the receiving areas, the one next to us, to the west of the village, and the one up by the interchange, were areas that were targeted, because there were other aspects of those areas that were conducive to accommodating concentrated growth. Highway interchange, higher density that already existed close by. So, a lot of things, you know, led to targeting those areas, logical areas for utilities.
Now, you mentioned like a high concentration of septic? Like, what, what does that look like? A high concentration, like, what's being, like, the last development map?
Yeah.
Where we have the new subdivision, if that was all septic? Or, like, what's that scale look like when you say high concentration of septic?
Yeah, so it depends on where your groundwater lies, firstly. You know, if you're, have a high concentration of septic, and it's decently far away from a groundwater source, it's not as much of a concern. But there's no set density, right? I think where you discover it to be a problem is suddenly the density that it is a problem. Every community is different. But, you know, there's a lot of places in lower Oakland County that you'll see people buying, you know, acre-by-acre-by-acre-by-acre lots and establishing septic systems on those until the whole township is covered in them, right? And then, you're like, oh, that's too many septic systems. So, that's what we're trying to avoid. Yeah. And also, that was a great point, John. If any of you have heard about Salem Township, which is down in Wayne County, they're trying to do a massive new subdivision with thousands of homes. And as a part of that, they want to do their own package sewage treatment plant, as well as connect to the city of Ypsilanti's water. And, as, sorry, city of Ypsilanti's sewage. And to do that, they actually would have to pass through their neighboring township in order to get to the city of Ypsilanti. And the city, the neighboring township said, absolutely not. If you run that sewer line through here, we're going to have developers chomping up all of our farmland, because suddenly, there's sewage access available. So, you know, it's, it's a flip side, right? You don't want to allow sewer access in the whole township, because suddenly, you get people trying to develop everything. But you do want to allow in a concentrated area to prevent those septic issues, if that makes sense. What's the name of that township they're running that through? What's the name of that township they're running that through or trying to? Anyway, Salem Township is the one trying to do this package sewage treatment plant. All right, let's do the next one, John. All right, bonus. Your plan actually inspired Vernon Township, which is up between Flint and Lansing, to do a similar concentrated development strategy. So pardon the colors on this. One of Vernon Township's planning commissioners is colorblind, so this is a specifically designed map for that purpose. Also, if you ever want a colorblind map, let me know. But this dash area that you see right here is what they are planning for future residential development. And in this area, they are planning for a anticipated maximum lot size. So they're saying, in order to fit all of the possible future residential development into this area, we are planning for, you know, half to quarter acre lots in this entire zone. So that is their concentrated receiving zone so that they can preserve all of this beautiful agricultural land around it. So I just wanted to mention that because you guys are sort of famous from your 2016 plan. And Vernon Township is a lot more rural, there's a lot less people than Holly Township, but it's still nice to know that your ideas are spreading beyond just your area. All right, John, next one, please. Okay, this is the future land use map. So you have this in front of you with the trees removed. At the request of Karen, the trees were confusing. And also obscure some of the parcels where you want to know what they are. So we, in the next plan, are going to take the trees out so you can see all of the parcels. But this is the future land use map. And we're going to go through each of these residential housing categories to talk about how the 2016 plan envisioned each of them. The one I'm not going to cover is manufactured housing park, in part because that is required by state law. Every community that has residential zoning has to have a mobile home park. So it's going to be there. Yeah, so we can go on to the next one, John, if you're ready. So the first one is rural estate. So in your map, this is the very light green that you're seeing through most of the township. This is the agricultural category. Typically, we're seeing, you know, houses that are on either 10 to 40 acre lots. These are active farmland houses. These are, you know, parcels that are either being conserved or used for the production of animal goods or plant goods. And then occasionally you'll see cluster development, which is some form of suburban development that has a lot of open space. But ultimately, the houses are on about five acre lots. And then transfer development, I'll get into a little bit. But when you see the term transfer development, this is referring to the concentration that we would expect to see if development was transferred from a sending zone to a receiving zone. So we don't have this system set up legislatively yet. But for example, if someone wanted to develop a rural estate parcel into a subdivision, and they were planning to do that, they would be given the option to transfer that development to the receiving zone and be able to build it at a higher density than is currently allowed in rural estate. And this is, you know, still something that we haven't launched yet. But it would be an incentive program to try to move development out of these sending zones into the receiving zones. So that's what you're seeing when you see transfer development as a term. And that's why it's also denser than these other two options. So.
Is that dwelling per acre? I'm sorry.
Yes, so this is one dwelling unit on a 2.5 acre lot. This is, yes. So one dwelling unit on a 40 acre lot. I want to make sure I wrote that correctly. Yeah, that, I think that makes sense. Wait, does that make sense?
DW would be dwelling, but I'd have figured DU.
Yeah, I should have done slashes on these instead of the, the ratio description. But anyway, imagine these are slashes and it makes more sense. But, um. Yeah. Yes, correct. And these are the character images from the 2016 plan that were designed to show, you know, the kind of feel that we're looking for in this area. The bottom one is, you know, a hand scout showing the type of experience. And the top one, you can almost imagine it as like a top-down view and then a little side view at the very top showing the density in this area. All right, John, next one, please. All right, so we're moving up one stage. This is the, I would call it medium green, medium green on the future land use map. And this is the low-density residential designation. In this one, you're typically seeing houses that are on five acre lots. Although sometimes with subdivisions, you might see them on two and a half acre lots. And then transfer would be one acre lots. All right, next one, please, John. Speeding along, neighborhood residential. This is the light yellow category on your future land use map. And this one is what you would consider your standard neighborhood, right? Typically a one acre lot, possibly a half acre lot or a third acre lot, depending on when that development is coming from. But that's usually the density you're looking for. All right, next one, John. And then finally, rural town center. So in the last master plan, the rural town center did not have a specific dwelling unit per acre ratio. But based on the descriptions of this land, as well as the density of manufactured home park, you could expect these to be on eighth acre lots or something closer to 11 dwelling units per acre. That's like, you know, the rough estimate based on the descriptions that were given of this character area. And that would be, you know, a 7,000 acre lot pretty much, or a 6,000 acre lot. Something like you tend to see in the close, you know, downtown village of Holly type homes.
Do you mean six to 7,000 square foot lot?
Yes, that is what I mean. Thank you. Not a 6,000 acre lot. My bad. That would be nice. Well, I'll move to Montana. But yeah, so this over here is an overall view of the pieces that we've been seeing stitched together. So if you can imagine, out here, the lowest density area is the rural estate. Moving into the low-density residential, the neighborhood density residential, and then the rural town center type development. This is kind of beyond what Holly Township is expecting in terms of development, but you could also consider this the industrial district on the north end of town. And then these are just some character images from different types of rural town centers. John, could you go to the next one? This is one that was included in the 2016 master plan. And, you know, this one was generally favored by the township, but we also have an updated version. Could you go to the next one again, John? This one really combines more of the white farmhouse style development that I think Holly is used to in a similar type of hand-drawn setting. And this one, this is just a sample, you know, development drawing. But you can also see that the rural town center would incorporate some of these commercial components or group gathering spaces alongside residential. So the rural town center is really the mixed-use district that envisions combining residential with these other uses in the township. All right, what is the next one, John? Yeah, okay, great. I forgot that I put this in here. This is even better. So this is, these are the objectives for the rural town center area that were included in the 2016 plan. I'm not going to read them word for word, but basically, you know, a diversity of uses, a connected area that works in harmony with the village of Holly and the neighborhood traditional areas. And an area that encourages sustainable design. So on the last drawing, you'll have seen probably, if you were looking closely, there were some solar panels. Some more incorporation of that type of low-intensity development that has less of an impact on the land. And that was something that was envisioned for the rural town center area. Does anyone have questions on the objectives from 2016? Or want more time to read them? Okay. So I am going to take a three-minute break, and you all are welcome to as well, because I think I've been talking for like 20 minutes now. So I'm going to pass out the worksheets that are going to be in the next section. And I also brought some snacks, so I'm going to put those on Mike's chair.
Well, Glenn, I know there was that, I don't know where it said in the process, but there was some legislation that was passed about septic inspections every five years.
Oh.
And the homeowner being responsible for those if it fails.
I think some counties have that regulation to be able to sell.
They're trying to make it statewide, yeah, requirement. And, you know, then the state department, health department would be responsible to go to your house. But the problem is too, a lot of even the health departments don't have records of all these septic systems that exist in their county.
Oh, I would think so.
You have to get, who would possibly administer all that?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the interesting, there's a lot of interesting pieces.
Yes, absolutely, me too. Fan even at 0-16.
They don't worry because the Republicans are trying to take all money back away. Take any sense.
Oh, my gosh.
You'd think there'd be some sandwiches. So you need more money, so you take away the money for the people.
With the snacks.
We have to share. Oh, my goodness.
I'm not asking to rush you gals, but should we maybe make, I would entertain a motion to take a recess if they're going to be a little bit, so we can pause the meeting.
It's only three minutes.
Three minutes or five? Five is good.
I can't make the motion. We don't have to. I was just suggesting it if we were going to be a little bit.
There you go. I'm sure Robert's rules are probably not perfect here, but.
Rarely is, I think.
It hasn't happened in our area, but a lot of areas where they put sewer systems through, it's forced into, it puts farmers out of business because they have to hook into it and it costs a bundle because they have the frontage.
My brothers. They had a farm up in the pier. And his, or his former brother, not to shirk or scratch, but anyway, in the pier, they ran a sewer out. And he was like running out of script. And they ran sewer across his property. Part of the deal was, I think, enough people to hook up, all the homework all the way would be his father. And you're right, he went bankrupt for that.
Oh, my goodness.
Because he didn't, you know, I mean, obviously lawyers looked at the thing before he signed it. He missed the fact. And I mean, then if not.
And that forces development, it almost forces development too, because they said they, they can't afford the hookups.
So instead of selling. Basically, they ended up taking his property to pay for the sewer system because basically.
I've heard that several times.
And it didn't even, now granted, it would have made his property worth more money if somebody would have.
If you can afford it. But, you know, if you're still trying to farm, you don't need that sewer system.
His dad was pretty sharp. He was a farmer that made money.
Not that we were provided. These were, not that we were provided, they, these were.
Yeah, we weren't even giving these before.
But that's what, my cousin.
Yeah, that or if you go, I believe on the planning tab on the township website, it should be in there under our 2016 master plan. If you look under the 2016 master plan, it should be.
So it's still kind of alluding to, at what point does that, what you have to do.
Are you sure? 10 years.
The only thing that's been even considered close to a proposal, I would say, is the projected idea of what this new development at, gosh, I can't think of what the subdivision is called or the development.
Seems like a whole lot.
Yes. So what that, what that could be. So that, that's the only thing that's kind of been, since I've been here, I've only been, I've only been here for a few months. But since I've been here, that's the only thing that's. Angela, I'm Ryan. Good to meet you.
When I go to pay property taxes, sometimes I wonder. I did quite, Bob Clark told me, I know who Bob Clark is. He told me if I ever had.
Nice help.
I bought quite a bit, but there was still another 20 acres where he put his house back in the woods. It was offered to me, but he offered the same price.
Yes, it did.
I mean, even though how dark, I mean, obviously, they, savings changes happen. My wife thought I was messing her someday, because she was like, oh, I want to get something, make something eat. I was like, I'll go get the eggs.
But it's not bad there.
You're lying.
No, I'm not really not.
You look, I know I mess with you a lot, but I'm not.
Some of the nicest part of the woods.
We have four pets though, so I, I did get the 5:30 a.m.
But I didn't expect.
It's not seven o'clock yet, man.
I was going to say, Charlie, I felt like Halloween and fall and winter all at the same time. I'm on Halloween night.
But he probably needed.
And I don't know who owned the property, Grantwater, across.
Yeah, we knew. What are your four?
I have a husky, border collie, and then two cats, Tabby. I don't know, they're all huskies. They didn't know, we don't know. They fit into the family.
They are family, that's for sure.
And I can remember, I went to the meetings one day, I was in.
Are they older?
Our husky's six. The cats are six and five, and our border collie's like three. Yeah.
Just out of the pup stage.
Yeah, she's, they're, 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 they all fit in the family well. They have their own personalities. Are we good?
You're talking about right next to, well. That's what I understood. Yeah, my mother said, they spent years getting that to drain. Randy Mitchell's not happy because that means a basement flood happened.
Anybody that has gripped anyway, when they bought their property. Now, I didn't, I've never, I don't know, she's like, I yell at father, she, she's a night owl.
Yeah, I heard that. Yeah, a long time, Owen's trying to get the drain. And they go through and plug it up.
Missing out. It's good stuff.
Want to see how this works out? Like American cheese.
I tried to hit as many possible dietary restrictions, so we'll see.
Yes, we are.
Okay, um, are we ready to get back into it, everybody? Okay, fantastic. Thanks for taking that quick break, so I could get some water too. So now that we've talked about the 2016 plan in pretty extensive coverage, let's get into the new information. So the two things we're going to cover today are the survey, which went out, and I don't remember how many responses it had in the end. Multiple hundred responses, which is pretty good for a township of this size. And I'm going to concentrate specifically on, let's see, is this a better distance? From my mouth? I was being told that this is, this is screaming. So this is okay? Can you hear me? Okay, great. So I'm going to concentrate on the questions in the survey that specifically talked about housing. There are more questions. You saw them in your October homework packet, but we're just going to go over these few. So the first one, which I think got to the age and place problem in particular, was if you're over 55, which of the following items are important to you as you age in place in Holly Township? And we had 170 responses of folks over 55, and 111 people skipped the question either because, well, it might not have felt like answering it, or they were under 55 and being honest on the survey. So, thank you. By far and away, the top housing concern was actually affording their home on a fixed income. And this can mean a lot of things. This can mean affording the taxes on your home, the mortgage on your home, or renovations on your home on a fixed income. So keeping in mind that affordability has a lot of different dimensions. Having a low-maintenance home was also a relatively high concern. People want a home that has, you know, accessible entry points, that doesn't involve having to do a lot of yard work, a lot of maintenance. You know, it gets, once, if you're young and you're living in a house from 1910, it's fun, and then over time, it's less fun. So that's really what we got out of this survey. And then there are also other age and place concerns that were more, you know, pressing than housing, which was living near family and friends, having a strong community, and also living near basic amenities like a grocery store. But in general, these were the top housing ones that we saw. Having age-friendly house features was actually less of a concern than we expected. But in part of that, you know, having an accessible home means that you don't have to have as many age-friendly features, right? If you have a low-maintenance home, you might not have to worry so much about the different features of your home. So it's always possible that that was the reason behind that. And then over here in what could be improved about Holly Township, you saw here, housing affordability and housing availability and choice were two of the options given. And these were actually on the lower end of concerns for the general public. The bottom one was transportation safety, whereas the top was recreation space and natural conservation and preservation. So even though Holly Township boasts some of the best recreation and natural spaces in the entire of Oakland County, people would still like to see more. And in addition to that, higher quality amenities at the existing recreation spaces that meet their needs. Right? It's not just the quantity of recreation space, it's what you can use it for. And then housing was relatively low down. But also keep in mind, the majority of respondents for this survey were in the 45 to 35 range. And those are usually people who have found a home that they can, you know, afford more easily than younger folks or older folks answering the survey. So does anyone have questions or immediate thoughts on these two charts?
My, my only pushback or, or I guess counterpoint is that I would argue that recreation space and natural conservation and preservation are still intertwined with housing.
Yeah, that is true.
You said the other ones were kind of more focused on housing, whereas these are the others, I would say they're, they're just as intertwined.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, especially natural conservation and preservation, right? And that, that can be a trade-off with housing. Great point. Okay, John, on to the next one, please. And this was what I think was the most interesting question that we asked regarding housing in the survey, which is what type of home do you currently live in and what type of home do you want to live in 10 years from now? So as you'll see, there was a slight decline in what people are imagining themselves living in, in 10 years in terms of standalone house. And it means more people are looking at moving to things like townhomes, attached condos, or independent living facilities. There's also a 2.14% increase in other, but nobody described what other meant. So, but in some cases, I, there are also folks who are considering moving in with family or moving out of Holly Township altogether. And we presume that some of them may have chosen the other option. But you'll see here, there's actually a decrease in interest in mobile homes and only a moderate increase in interest in apartments. And then it's completely stable with duplex. And, yes.
I guess out of this, this year's survey, what struck me so strong is still how strong it is for standalone housing. For the rural to have here for our community. And out of everything I've gone through with the survey, to me, that still has struck out, stuck out as being one of the most important parts of, of what we're looking at, is the standalone housing.
I, I thought it was cool and interesting. Yeah, I mean, th- these are current residents, obviously, so they're.
Well, 11 people outside the township, but mostly current residents, yes.
You know, of that 90.39%, almost 84% of them want to stay in their house or in a house, so.
Or have the, or have the opportunity to either develop land or something where they can have a, their own, you know, single-family home. Even more so, I think, than when we look at as far as apartments or, you know, mobile homes or things, you know, duplexes or things like that. Where sometimes when you look at a master plan, you think, this is areas where we have to necessarily put all of our concentration to develop. But maybe our concentration should be on how we make sustainable, single-family homes, how we can allow more people to develop single-family homes, and for the stability to have that.
Yeah, absolutely. And another thing I just want to note about this is the responses captured in this survey were mostly people over 45. So keep in mind that these preferences are reflecting a, a certain demographic of the township, right? There was an imbalance because the survey was an opt-in survey, it wasn't a scientific, random survey. So keep in mind that that's the population that you're seeing these preferences come out of, in the majority. So, and this does not capture the preferences of people who live outside the township but want to move to Holly Township in the future. So just keeping that in mind as well.
Nani, if, if I could, can, can people hear me?
Yeah.
So I, I think that's a great point, that single-family detached, single-family will continue to define the character of Holly Township for, for the, for, over 10%, they want. They want something other than single-family homes, and they don't have any other alternatives right now. So that's what we, we, we need to, we need to add some of that type of housing for, for those people, so that they can, and it's a small amount. You know. So i- i- it, it will always be single, single-family detached will always be the predominant housing type here in Holly Township. Don't, don't fear, that will be the housing type that defines the future of this community. But you still need to augment that with some alternatives, and that's what we're talking about here, is what other types.
Of what other types, what can we offer?
Can conserve, conserve the, the desires of the people that are, you know, living in single-family homes now and looking for alternatives.
But I would like to add the point too, that Holly Village, a lot of people consider that, they don't know where the line for the township is, so that does offer some, not a lot, but there's apartments and whatever, and I don't think a lot of people know where the lines are in particular for that, so.
Sure.
They may be considering, and, you know, Village is in the township as well, so, um, but we're talking more, more about not part of Village for this part, I thought, so.
Yeah, we are not talking about the Village in this part, in part because we also can't control what the Village does, right, just like we can't control what the school districts do. And it's land outside of our jurisdiction, but I would say, um, Holly Township does have its own distinct character though, even though people might not know exactly which street you're driving over to cross the boundary, you certainly know when you see your tax bill, so, you know, that helps too. All right, John, next one, please. All right, so the other major change for this round of the master plan was the housing demand study. So last time, there was not room in the timeline and the budget of the master plan to do a comprehensive housing analysis, and this time, there was. So, uh, we analyzed the demand for new housing in Holly Township, meaning people that are interested in moving to Holly Township, the amount of vacant land that is available for housing development in the receiving zones specifically, uh, the planned density of the receiving zones under the future land use map, and the types of housing changes that will happen when there's changing demographics. So housing demand is going to change depending on, like I said, which age classes of people you have moving to the township. And the goal of this was ultimately to answer how much land needs to be planned for these different future land use categories in order to accommodate the demand that you expect, the growth that you would expect over the next few years, but keep it in a controlled fashion. So in short, there is a very big Excel sheet behind this that you are welcome to view, that I did not put in this presentation because it's very ugly. We're going to cover the high-level findings of this housing study. So John, can you go to the next one? So, just to, you know, refresh, these are the receiving areas of the township that have residential planned future land use areas. There's also the third receiving area way up at the top, but that one is planned for commercial development, so it wasn't included in this analysis. So we're really focusing on these two, as well as this non-receiving area. So this is the business-as-usual area of planning for growth as we currently have it. And this is just the reference map showing that this is roughly the non-receiving zone. There's the third receiving zone up there that's commercial. So these are the areas where we were looking at how much vacant land is available for different categories, and these dark gray bits that you'll see right here in these two, and the light gray bits that you see over here, are all of the vacant parcels that are currently planned for residential uses in the future. So these are parcels that we would consider ready for development. That doesn't mean the people that own them want to sell them, or the people that own them want to set a price for them that is good for the market, but it means that they are open right now, as opposed to having to tear something down in order to redevelop that site. All right, next one, please, John. And these are the overall figures that we were looking at for each of these areas. This is a very simple distillation of this big Excel sheet, but for each one, we separated the areas into receiving and the non-receiving zones, the different amounts of land that were classified by each future land use category in acres, and the minimum and maximum density that those are planned for under the future land use map. So, does anyone have questions about this table before we get into the results of this? Okay, great, let's move on to the findings then. So John, next one, please. Okay, so, this is the maximum versus the minimum future land use density scenarios, given the data we just absorbed. So this is the minimum over here, so if you go with the lowest density planned in the future land use map, and this is if you go with the highest dens, oh, sorry, I have this in reverse. This is the highest density planned in the future land use map, yep, and that's the lowest one, where it says minimum. So, given the land that you have available and the land uses that you've planned it for, if you go with the highest possible demand, you're going to see that by 2040, you'll probably be hitting 60% of your capacity, which is on the lower side. Whereas if you go with the lowest possible density in the future land use map, you would be overcapacity by 2040. But it's really unlikely that development is going to happen in one of these two scenarios, right? Development doesn't just happen at gung-ho, the highest density or the lowest density, it happens somewhere in the middle. So if you take the average of these two, Holly Township can expect a 71.9% capacity by 2030, and 76.7% capacity by 2040, in terms of your housing stock and available land. And, you know, last time, when you had done your future land use map, you didn't know if this was actually going to line up with your demand and your capacity, but you guessed pretty good, to be honest, in 2016. This means that you have ample room for development, but not too much, right? You have an overplanned land for residential development, and you also haven't underplanned your land for residential development, if that makes sense.
So you're saying we can expect 71.9% capacity to reach the, our capacity in 2030?
Yeah, if you're developing at the average future land use density scenario.
But I guess, I, I don't know, I read, you know, the last Michigan Planner Magazine, which I thought had a very, very good article in there, where it actually had said, Michigan has lost residential growth over the years. And we are behind basically in growth, basically because of jobs, education, schools, and this was really a good article. So I really, and I do see, if you look at a lot of the graphs and things, we, where we had a lot of growth, maybe up to 2020, we've kind of come to a standstill right now. So where, I guess that's, my question is, where does that put us then? I don't know if we actually would reach that capacity by then, and, so, you know, I don't, I don't know, if you take this into consideration.
Yes, we do take that into consideration. So the population projections that you saw at the beginning of this presentation account for the fact that right now, Michigan as a whole is seeing a standstill in our population. But that doesn't mean that Holly is not on the trajectory to be.
Or that we shouldn't look forward.
Yeah.
Or look ahead, rather, to say, are we prepared?
Yes, especially because Holly is a very desirable place to live. You have a beautiful scenery, excellent school system, it's just honestly a nice community to live in, which makes it a much more desirable place than other parts of Michigan. So you're going to see losses in population in some other places, and that population will be gained by Holly Township, if that makes sense.
What we have is proximity to I-75, I-69, 59, all the major expressways are not far away from us, and that's a big thing. I would think, and I didn't read the article, Pam, but a lot of that stagnant growth is as you go north. There's just not much development up there, people retire up there, but boy, I just don't see that people building a lot of houses up there, they might have cabins, but it, Holly is just, if you look at the whole southeast kind of Michigan, we're kind of filling that out between Port here into Lansing and, and Detroit, north to Flint, kind of thing, and we're just in, in the middle of that, so.
Yeah.
If, if you look at the SEMCOG website, if you're so inclined, SEMCOG has great maps that show where the population growth areas are in, in the, in the state. So yes, the state as a whole i- is sort of flatlining, but there are definitely shifts within the state in terms of where people want to live. You know, Grand Rapids is going nuts, you know, so there's areas in the state that are attracting population from other areas of the state. And Holly luckily is on the attracting side of it.
It's a good problem to have.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, of these 71.9 and 76.7, is that the areas that are considered receiving, or just Holly Town, okay, so just the receiving areas, you're saying?
Receiving and the business-as-usual zone.
Gotcha.
This does not account for the sending zones. There is vacant land in the sending zones, all of it's planned for pretty much one dwelling unit on an agricultural parcel. So there's not that much that could accommodate this type of growth, if that makes sense.
And, and the other aspect of this is, so when, when and if, uh, developers assemble land and come to the township and say, we'd like to rezone this, uh, rural estate, uh, you know, area to a neighborhood designation, and they say, and the reason we think it's necessary is because, uh, you know, there's demand for, for housing. Our response can confidently be, we have plenty of land designated in the receiving areas where there's anticipated, uh, services, water and sewer and so forth, to accommodate all the growth. We don't need to consider rezoning that would be inconsistent with the master plan. The master plan has accurately allocated sufficient land to accommodate the foreseeable growth. It's a very logical and orderly approach to accommodating, you know, the, the type of growth we anticipate.
Yeah, great point, John, thank you.
Now, from the earlier slides though, there could be a development in the rural estate that still is 1, 2, 2 and 1/2, or 5 acres, whatever the ratio was, or?
Nope.
So, at this point, no, because Holly Township has a moratorium on new private roads. So we're really trying to discourage those types of suburban developments in the rural estate area. It might be possible, say, if Oakland County granted them a public road for some reason, that is beyond me, but we're really trying to discourage that. John, yeah?
Well, I, I just want to clarify.
Not that I'm encouraging that, but just asking the question.
So in the, in the rural estate, which is lowest density category, if someone who owns 40 acres of land in rural estates, they cannot develop one unit per 2.5 acres on their property. What they can do is they can sell the development rights to somebody in the receiving zone, so they can get the value of their property at a higher density, but their property remains undeveloped. Their property would remain undeveloped, and the units that would have gone on that property are developed in the, in the receiving zone.
Does that make sense?
Is that actually in place for that?
It, it's in the master plan, but it's not legislated yet, we don't have the zoning ordinance in place to do that. But a- as it was mentioned earlier, the reason for that is to encourage this housing supply to go into areas designated, uh, in your master plan for future growth and development, and take the pressure off, uh, those, uh, large rural agricultural areas, without depriving those own, landowners of the value of their property. So this actually increases the value of their property for sending the development to the appropriate area in the township. So their, their, their property is more valuable in that scenario than it is if they just wanted to put one house for every 20 acres or every 10 acres even.
And when in place, you probably heard the term transfer of development rights program, that's what this would be, a transfer of development rights program. And that's why it's also called transfer density on those past slides. All right, any other?
Could you explain that further? I'm missing the point of that. If you have, where you wouldn't allow development but want a development, you can actually trade to an area that already allows heavy development. I don't understand why they would be willing to.
The property ownership is where I'm hung up on that whole concept.
Going to.
So, the, the, the receiving zone.
Yeah, that's where you're allowing development, basically.
Right, if they wanted to develop something by right, right, they would be limited to a certain density. However, if they receive the development rights from the sending zone, they get more units. So both property owners get added value for sending the development to the appropriate area of the township.
So you're saying the receiving already has some limits on it, and it would relax those limits, basically?
It would allow for an increase.
Increase, okay.
To, to the maximum density that's in the master.
It's complicated.
It, it's very complicated, but I, I'm happy to say that it's, we wouldn't be the first ones to do it. It's been done before, and it's a matter of, you know, it's a real estate transaction. I'm selling the rights of my property to you, you get to use it over there. The state has, uh, you know, in, in the state, uh, the plan enabling act, the zoning enabling act, it allows for this sort of transfer and preservation of land, uh, i- in the act, so it, it's allowed.
So the sending unit is saying, I'm giving you, or selling basically to the receiving, does that limit for the life of the property then, that they can, cannot develop it, or very, very limited, is that?
In the sending area, yes, they, they would not have.
It would be like to sell the development rights.
They would have to put a conservation easement on, on their property.
They could still have their single-family home though, if they currently lived in one, you know.
And they could continue to use it for agricultural purposes, that, you know, there would be a list of things that they could use it for, that would be similar to a, a purchase of development rights. Where they can use it for certain, you know, agricultural-related, open space-related things, very, very limited, you know, residential use, but very limited.
So you're actually preserving more of the?
Yeah. It, it's, it's designed to preserve farmland, also designed to encourage the concentrated, compact development that we're anticipating, that we're envisioning for these, uh, other areas.
I do have one question though, I mean, if you look at your map here where we have our receiving zones, I can see in your northern area up here, you've got more open land, but down here, to receive more, for, for, to lessen your density, or to build more, there really isn't a lot of room down here for receiving. I mean, this section right down here has been a lot of our question when we talk about site plans and development, where we've been concerned even of just meeting infrastructure needs and traffic and the roads.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of surprised to see that as a receiving zone.
Yeah, that's the place, because that's where the utilities are, that's where the roads are, that's where.
Sewer service.
But just because it is, I mean. But just because it is, I don't know what, how much more you could fit in there.
John, could you go back to?
That to me is a good area for.
Where, where 290?
Two more slides, John?
Back?
Yeah, back two. Yeah, so this is the vacant land that's currently available in those receiving areas, and remember also, this non-receiving zone is included as well, so this, this business-as-usual zone, so, um. It's actually got more vacant land than you think available in these areas when you take a look at the overall aerial maps of them. And, um, you know, when you think about a transfer of development rights program, say, 100 years from now, right? Say, all of these vacant parcels have been developed at a reasonable density. Maybe that's the point where these homeowners over here that have these single-family lots say, you know, I'd like to combine my lots together so that I'm eligible for the transfer of development rights program, so I can start receiving that development from elsewhere. So remember that even when you are built out on these vacant sites, 100 years from now, there could be some more redevelopment of these existing sites, if that makes sense. And yeah, of course sewer service is always a concern, like putting the horse before the cart or the cart before the horse, um, is one of the great challenges of all communities, but this area is targeted because of the sewer availability. John, do you have any other thoughts about that?
Nope.
Okay. Then let's keep going. So, next one, please. All right, this is getting into worksheet time, so in front of you, you should have worksheet number one, it's the one with the table on it, and, um, would you mind joining her, since this is actually a team worksheet? All right, so, for this one, what I'm really trying to get from you as commissioners is a sense of whether or not the housing goals from the 2016 plan still align with the township's vision for the future. So you're all in groups of two, and together with your team, please assign each of these housing categories, each of these housing goals, a rating 1 through 3. Then we're going to have Alexis live tabulate them, and ones that score underneath a certain level from the entire commission, we're going to go into more discussion on them. So, um, hopefully you like your partner.
I object.
But yeah, so take, you know, five or 10 minutes, however much time you need to go through these items, and then these are up here for the public as well, so you guys can read through them as they're doing their worksheets.
Did I hear correct, or were they in order of importance in the 2016, or is this just the goals?
Nope, they're, no, no order of importance, they're just the number of goals that we have, so, yep.
So when I, when I was looking at the survey, probably the, the things that stood out to me were the single-family homes, preservation. The, the word bubbles I thought were really cool, the biggest thing you talked about, people, community, rural. So, I do agree that if we're going to develop, we want to keep it, we don't want hodgepodge developments. Mildly pushback, and I still feel like it's getting edged around. But in this area, we have a concern about the traffic, the water and sewer. The last plan that was submitted for this area, the fire, said it would not. They were overusing the infrastructure. And then, and then the, the fire, fire suppression. So, I agree, we need to have some condensing and have development.
Design residential development standards should be directly related to the natural capacity. So, that could probably use review and rewording.
So, I mean, generally agree. I mean, I guess the question then becomes, what is the natural capacity? So, we, I mean, we could even say.
Yeah, I don't know.
It says there are other appropriate transitions. They're saying, basically.
Develop and run hand zoning standards. Open space developers or other appropriate transitions between residential and residential spaces. This to me, I think, is important, because then, we can then allow for the condensing on a smaller scale. Because we're going to require.
But there are incentives that you're really not so.
Zones that people want, only that preservation, recreation spaces. Well, we can have the developments, but we need to have some of those things incorporated. So, I think we can, would you want to do like a two or three?
I'd say it, I'd say it, I don't know, more towards a three. Do you want a two and a half?
No, that's fine. I think it's important. Include zoning. That's me, I'm all about preservation. I need the growth, and I have to grow, but we need to preserve our people. So, I mean, we're considering up north, and it's a major reason, right? Enhance the sense of community and improve the transportation options by connecting the residential parks and cultural facilities. I mean, I think that would be, my opinion, I'd generally agree, I think having those things connected, being able to have connection. Because it connects people to those right here.
There are two receiving areas, huh?
Right, hundred percent. So, um, that would be either a two or a three for me. What's your opinion? Develop pedestrian connections between residential neighborhoods. I guess I would think that's another one of those where we made.
Yeah, because it goes with this one, but it kind of is.
So, what does that look like? Work with developers to provide recreational and open space developments as well. Based off of what our community has had. Visuals. Development of higher density housing, such as apartment townhomes, senior areas with infrastructure available would be provided by development. I'm on the, I, not that I don't agree, but I just think it's review or rewording, because I do agree that we need those things to be smarter. It's just, it's, it's, uh, it's so condensed, the idea right now. Well, not even, I, I emailed the, the, the commission. You know, Grinch Home Road is a nightmare right now in front of all of us, and it's going to quadruple, you know, so.
The village is big into that from what I understand, that people, you have the right windows, you have to have that, but I don't ever like that.
And I read at no point, so I, I go off that exit every day for 2030, so I get it. Development, zoning, designing, all the types of rural character. I think we need to have consistent facade or, or things in place that preserve the looking. Did I? Require appropriate water and sewer service. So, to me, that's strongly a for. And provide a wide range of housing options for all age groups. Means I think generally agree would be my opinion. Not that I think we need to reword it or anything. We did have survey results that showed there was a desire for some variety of loa. A wide range doesn't mean. It's just not, not five hundred.
You don't want our names there, do you?
Excuse our 1.5. It was the only answer that felt right.
We have a two to three.
We have put both numbers on, we were.
How long we might have been one, two, three.
That's why we have sending zones.
So, while you're just standing there. But, but you caught us with something about there's no, you can't put roadways for.
Yeah, moratorium on private roads.
For Holly Township or other places, or? That's a, that's a township board thing issue, so?
So, they just, I'm confused. When did they do that?
So, it's been for a while?
Anytime I pass by one of those roads, man, I'm like, man.
I thought they discouraged it because they didn't want, the, the county doesn't want to take over them because they're so expensive.
Right, that's what I see.
I didn't know any more.
Okay, thanks, folks. Alexis is going to work on averaging out all of your scores for those items, and then, we will share out those scores with the entire group. And we'll also, you know, make a copy of each of the individuals for the public record. So, all right, so go to the next one, John, because Alexis has got to do some math for that one first. Okay, so this is worksheet number two that you have in front of you. This is individual, this is not group. So, tru-, it should be, it's a double sided worksheet. Find the one that matches roughly these pictures up at the top. So, in this case, what we're doing right now is trying to get a feel of what you feel about each future land use category. And I want your gut reaction for each one of these images. Which future land use category you think best corresponds to each image. So, you'll see on your worksheet, there's little white boxes in front of each of them. Please write down your individual answers, and then, we're going to discuss up on the board what each of them is. And these are just different, you know, styles and densities of development to give a sense of the different types. So, again, this is a character and density analysis. We're not so much looking for the style of the homes, just the overall arrangement and density in which one you think fits best with each category. And you can assign multiple categories, no categories, it doesn't matter. There's not a one to one ratio. There's also not a correct or incorrect answer. It's just what you as an individual are feeling and reaction to each one.
Boxes are pretty small.
Are you very fast?
I had a pre look here. Oh, it's two sided, though, it seems.
No, that's okay. That one's coming in a bit.
There's a back to the test.
The answers are in the back.
I don't know. Two of them look the same to me, so.
Do you agree at all?
Well, we, we disagree that I could. You're probably right. There's no right and wrong in this.
I hope not.
I don't think you have enough choices.
So, if you get, get roads, you still probably could put a long driveway, but I think there's furniture. Isn't there a furniture ant cavity in it if you had a building? So, again, you, you all look back to the, the road thing. You could go long driveway, but you still have to have road furniture, which is probably, so you're still very limited.
So, you have to split yours up in, you know, ten acres, you're thinking one to match a row.
If you had a long, you're part, so you would actually, maybe one or two, how many most, where it could be several acres.
I think, I think we're all good.
Yeah, yeah.
All good.
No, Pam, Pam was just finishing.
Okay, um, so, okay, great. So, everybody's all set on that, and you should have your own individual answers. So, um, before we go to the next slide to talk about it, um, can someone shout out what they wrote for this top one?
Neighborhood residential.
You wrote neighborhood residential? Okay, did anyone else also write neighborhood residential? Okay, did you guys write something different for neighborhood residential?
I called it low density.
I thought they could have been bigger lots.
Okay, yeah. It's also kind of hard to tell how far back these go sometimes, so sorry about that. But, okay, what about this one? Can someone else shout out what they wrote for this?
Neighborhood residential.
Okay, got it. What about this one?
Neighborhood residential.
Okay, so all neighborhood residential across this side?
Well, no, the top one, the top one is low density, because I'm right.
What about this one over here?
That one's low density.
Low density.
Low density, okay.
I called that rural estate.
Rural estate.
Could be.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. This lot cuts off kind of behind that house, so sorry, I should have drawn a little dashed arrow or something like that. This one, I feel like we're probably on the same page.
Rural estate.
Yeah, and what about this one down here? Rural town center. Okay, got it. So, John, can you go to the next slide?
Well, wait, wait, hang on a second. So, how many put rural town center for the lower right corner?
This one? Okay, what, did anyone put rural town center for this one? No? Okay. So, John, go to the next page. So, these are the densities that you're seeing for each of the images that you were given. So, these homes down here are actually at eight dwelling units per acre, which is part of what you currently planned your rural town center area to look like. So, now, knowing that, knowing that this type of development would, you know, this level of density would be acceptable in the rural town center, do you still think that matches? Which is why I wanted you to write down your answers before we actually went into the density stuff.
Like, are you asking, do we want our rural town center to look like that?
Yeah, would you, would you be willing, you know, does, do you think a mix of these two things would match the intent and objective of the rural town center district? Because right now, these are the densities you have a plan for. If it's, if it's not right, that's what I want to know, you know, that's all we care today.
I, I think, I think it's still too tight, frankly.
Too tight? You mean, the one on the right or the one on the left?
The one on the left. The eight, the eight, yeah.
The eight, okay. And then, up here, we have, so rural estate is, this was the character image for rural estate. I feel like we're all on the same page for that one. Low density, in the low density district, uh, we have planned a mix of these two types of housing development. This is a two dwelling unit per acre lot and a one dwelling unit per acre lot. These ones go back pretty far, which you can't actually see, they have long backyards. But do we still feel like that mix is making sense?
Two dwellings on an acre lot, yeah. That seems too dense to me.
Two dwellings per acre, so half acre lots is too dense?
For, for the rural estate.
For rural estate, yeah.
Oh, for rural estate, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about low density and neighborhood, which I think you guys agreed this made more sense for those.
So, she's saying, like, this picture and this picture are exactly the same as the?
Yeah.
Not quite the same, but yeah. And then, this one, five dwelling units per acre isn't an exact density that you have planned in the master plan. But if you were seeing receiving development from, for example, the sending area coming into the receiving zone in the neighborhood residential area, this is the type of density that you might see on the higher end. So, does that one still align, we think? And again, there is no right answer. I just want your gut reactions to this.
Is that what we want a quote unquote neighborhood to look like? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're saying.
I'd be acceptable.
Okay, it seemed like most of you wrote that down before we went to this slide, and then, that was about lining up. But, um, okay, so, yeah, you.
I'm confused in the lower left there. Eight dwelling units per acre, wouldn't they have to be apartment buildings or something? What you're seeing there doesn't look like you could get.
Yeah, so eight dwelling units per acre is not what always people envisioned it to be. It's about a six thousand square foot lot. And you, you know, these lots pretty much cut off behind these homes. They have a short backyard. But these are genuinely eight dwelling unit per acre lots. Um, and that's why also I included these, because these acreage densities are not that different, but they can look very different, depending on how much open space you provide in a cluster development or how much shared space you provide to each individual home.
So, still, I just look at the comparison, eleven dwelling units there, it would look like it would be much higher per acre. But I depend how much parking area or how much is behind that. But I would say that would be much higher than the eight dwelling units. I just, I just can't see how you could get the two and that close.
If you isolated this to just like this tiny amount of land that the housing sits on, it would be much higher. But you're right, they do have parkland associated with these types of developments. They have large parking areas. They have, you know, community buildings, those sorts of things.
So, you're saying these two on the bottom more or less would go together.
Yeah, a, a mix of those two are what you currently have planned.
You would look at in a development, say, like Riverside or something.
Or something like that, yeah. So, this one, this one is actually a rendering. This is not from Holly Township. But the other ones are all from either Holly Township itself or areas immediately adjacent to Holly.
The bottom left I would look at, I would think that's Village Holly for most of it.
Yeah, for sure, hundred percent.
This is actually closer to, dang it, the township that's directly.
Grand Blanc, Fenton.
No, it's the township that's directly east of Holly. What township is that?
Groveland.
Silver and Groveland Township, yep. So, uh, because I figured if I picked the Village of Holly, you guys might recognize the housing. You know, what's the point? But, um, yeah, so, okay, great. Then, we're also going to collect your worksheets after this because it helps us remember the feedback you've just given. But, yeah, so Alexis, are you done with the results from the first one? Okay, John, go back one slide, please. Okay, so, let's take a look at the aggregate results and scores. Okay, so, the, the lowest scoring items for these goals were ten, eleven, oh, wait. Hold on, I'm reading, I'm reading it wrong. Sorry. These are, yeah, these are nine, ten, and eleven for aggregate scores the lowest out of all the goals that you rated as important. So, they're up there on the one. That's development and forest zoning and design guidelines that reflect Holly's rural character. Maintain large residential lots in descending zones and preserve the rural density character and natural features in these areas. And provide a wide range of housing options for all age groups. So, uh, sorry, the housing options for all age groups is fine. One above that, require appropriate water and sewer service required. It mixed up because the Excel shows one row down from that. So, nine, ten, and eleven. It mixed up because the Excel sheet is one row down from that, so nine, ten, and eleven. Um, and you either flagged these because you thought they needed reworking or rephrasing, so let's start with number nine, which is require appropriate water and sewer service for higher density development. Who thought that one needed reworking or rephrasing? Any other groups?
I think we probably did.
We didn't like it.
Wait, you're looking at the wrong one, number three, looking at the wrong one.
Wrong one, okay, so number nine, tell me a little bit more about why you flagged that one, does it need some reworking or rephrasing? This is a group discussion.
A group discussion?
Yeah, for anyone that flagged that one.
Well, it, again, it seems like it's backwards, if you wanted to have high density development, then the sewer and water already have been there. Pretty hard to bring sewer and water into a development in our township to make it work, so how would you require sewer and water? You know, if I happened to live on my sixty acre farm and wanted to, I mean, there's no sewer and water there, how would you, how would I, how would you require that to make it happen?
So you think it would be more sense if it said require water and sewer service for higher density development in the receiving areas, for example, like asking developers to leave that in the receiving.
Well, where it's already available, so.
I think where it's available, I mean, the the word requires, like, how we're going to require water and sewer, I mean, we don't have water and sewer really in the entire township.
That's what you're looking at right there, we're so strongly drawn.
Yeah.
I mean, we have it in certain one area where the agreement was made a long time ago, it's there, but other than that, it's, you know, it's not available. How how are we going to require water and sewer in our township when it's not an option?
Yeah, so, I I.
George might be working on in a very obscure corner of our township, but for the most part, you know, that's it's all a special circumstance, I would think.
I can see where they were put at one.
I I I think the other way to look at it is, you you can't have high density development, higher density development unless there's water and sewer.
That's sort of better wording.
I would agree with that.
So either either the townships are going to partner to provide it up in the northeast corner, or, you know, you're gonna, you know, let it. Uh, developer's going to have to pay the bulk of it, uh, you know, in in the area.
I think we're caught up with who's who's requiring it, who's who's going to be paying for it, basically, that kind of thing.
Right, yeah.
You could add additional detail to make that make it more sense.
Well, you think so.
I think that's a good advice on working at the way that, but it's absolutely crazy, you know, I think the township has the agreement that, you know, where it develops, where's it, the developers should pay for it, that's really clear.
Yes.
Okay, did anyone have something different to say about number nine in particular, besides that? Okay, so number ten, develop and enforce zoning and design guidelines that reflect Holly Township's unique rural character. So this one was also scored pretty low compared to its others, this got an average rating of one point five, so who wanted to rework the wording on number ten? All, or anything?
There was two of us in the class.
At least two of the groups also wanted to move on for this, um, but, so what about number ten, did it need some reworking or?
Well, it sounds like you were forcing people into doing something, and we just don't like when you force people to do things. Encourage wasn't a bad term, but it it sounded like this was going to be required or somehow tell people what they have to do to say, keep a rural character.
So develop and enforce, so the develop and enforce action is currently.
I would think encourage, unique rural character, but not, the wording there would, again, would make me think you're forcing it onto them to something that's.
So so to, so we, you know, as an occupational hazard, we we have to figure out how we're going to actually do this, right? So, we have a master plan that says preserve the rural character, right? And so, uh, the our first go to is let's have some zoning ordinances that explain what rural character is, and that's what you're required to do. But the other way to do it is to say, if you just want to go ahead and do it the way you want to do it, you get one dwelling unit per acre. But if you want to really, you know, uh, in in include some rural design characteristics and really try to blend into the community, then you can get additional density. In exchange for that, so we're not requiring it, we're not requiring it, we're encouraging it by providing it an incentive. The other way to do it is to have guidelines, which in my experience is worth about, you know, the same amount as the paper that's under the corner of the wobbly desk over there. Because, you know, if there's nothing nothing in it for me, I'm not going to do it.
So maybe.
So does that make sense?
Maybe the language here also is, the issue is the word reflect, right, maybe this should be something more like encourage, like you were saying, rather than the term reflect. Because this, you know, develop and enforce, that's an action that's an onus put on the township as an agency, but this is what applies to the, you know, community as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
So, if we change reflect to encourage, would that make more sense, or is the issue really with the front part of the sentence?
I think it's with the front part.
I like the incentive part.
Okay, so including some notes about incentive.
The incentives would make more sense.
Okay, Alexis, can you take a note of that, please?
And again, one of the things here, whose perception of unique rural character, because that could be completely different from mine from somebody else on this board.
Yeah.
It's it's your perception and it could be completely different from what we're looking at there. So if you're going to do that, you almost have to define what you mean by that rural character, is it keeping trees, is it digging ponds, is it?
Well, that's what I feel our ordinances and things would 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 create, those guidelines and those things in order to, you you can. If you want to do a new build house, here are your options, it can look like these five things or whatnot, so that there's consistency and reference.
You got the word rural, basically.
Yeah, and also, in the in the master plan, which we.
Yeah.
You got the word rural.
Oh, yeah, because people think we're rural, we think we're the city practically now.
We didn't provide. Yeah. We didn't provide the full, you know, copy to you guys, but in the latter parts of the master plan, there also are character descriptions for each of the zones of the township, saying.
Okay, okay.
In this zone, this is the kind of architecture that you currently have, this is the kind of natural environments you currently have, and it gives a picture of what the character is today in a visual sense. So that's included in the master plan, um, if you're happy with the character that the township has today, then there shouldn't necessarily be any changes to those chapters. But if you think there should be a dramatic difference, we can also look at updating those, um, they're really more descriptive than they are imperative, if that makes sense. But, um, okay, so eleven, maintain large residential lots in descending zone areas to preserve low density rural character and natural range of features within these areas. This was the other one that was flagged with a below two score, so, um, who who flagged this as below two?
Guess who?
Either of you guys flagged this as two or one or anything?
No.
I I give that a three.
You gave it a three? Did we calculate that one wrong?
A three.
What'd you do to the other two?
Three.
Hey, this is.
Don't be anonymous.
Ours were like the higher up.
I think it was more or less just interpretation, you guys interpreted it a little bit differently, you know, especially like the water one.
It is.
Yeah.
And that's exactly. And we're at freezing all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, in my mind, of course, it's important to have infrastructure in place for what they're trying to do, but but you're talking about, you're talking about new.
So I think I think it's back.
The whole sending and receiving stuff makes zero sense to me.
You're talking about new and adding on, I just had in my mindset the existing and keeping it.
The sending and receiving, it's just like, I I don't get it.
And they have battery.
You'd have to have both parties backwards, because my understanding that.
Here, Nani.
Yes. Yeah, they are backwards, I just did this backwards, I'm so sorry, everybody, number eight is what we're looking at for the lower score.
Okay.
Thank you, number eight is what we're looking at for the one that scored below an average of two, so let's do number eight instead, sorry. When we did the Excel sheet, it rearranged the order of them, so I got mixed up, but this one, this one in particular, so can someone explain why they flagged that one?
Well, when looking at the survey results, yes, there was an uptick in, uh, living quarters out that were not for single family. But that was seventy percent and it was still eighty-four for a single family, um, for where people wanted to be in ten years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, keeping in mind for natural preservation, recreation spaces, two things that were highlighted as extremely important by the people that took the survey.
I thought so.
Mm-hmm.
As well as, you know, um, we're the up north of Oakland County and stuff. I don't know if we want to encourage the development of higher density housing, I know when we looked at the the last initial thought or plan. All of us here had concerns around just how dense that rural town center area was, how congested, how congested everything is currently.
Considering what's.
And we wanted to essentially quadruple, I mean, between homes, apartments, townhomes. Commercial area, all within that little red spot.
And up in the upper right hand corner, there's another rural town center, but, yeah.
Yeah, but, um, I mean, I think it has its place, but as it was being presented, at least my opinion, it's it's far too condensed. So I think, at least me, that's what got me on that one, is trying to preserve what Holly Township should be and wants to be. As well as balancing that we we do need, we do need some development, like, there's, you know, we are a growing area and stuff, but how do we balance that? So, that, of the things that did score well for me.
So my question was, if we think about the desire for alternative housing formats, what if this was reworded to say, you know, encourage the development of other housing types? In order to still meet that demand without making an explicit push towards a certain density? You know what I mean, because there's still a demand for senior housing, apartments, townhomes, those sorts of things, but it would change the overall idea of it.
And I don't disagree with that, in that in that we do have the infrastructure in place in those areas, so let's be strategic, but.
Right.
Where the infrastructure's available. Um, from my understanding at the last meeting, the the plan that was presented, the infrastructure couldn't support what was presented to us for the water and sewer. And the fire department had struggles and opinions as far as, um, how to battle a fire and the safety and all that, so I think I think it really needed to be looked at.
Yeah, I also think it's important not to get too focused on the one development plan that's been presented to you, you know what I mean? This is for the, all of the rural town center areas in the township, right, so just just prefacing that, but yeah.
Yeah, and the other thing I would point out, just just like the wording with, uh, number, uh, sorry, number. Nine, where it says require appropriate water and sewer service for high density development. We're not going to allow higher density development that's not safe. I mean, people live in apartments, it's safe, people live on small lots, it's safe, we we might have to do things differently than we do for larger lots, right? For larger, uh, more spread out single family homes, to ensure that they're safe. But any, uh, alternative housing types that get developed here in the in the township, whether it's a townhouse, whether it's a a connected, uh, ranch unit. Or whatever, is going to be safe, it will be able to be served by by the fire department emergency, uh, access. Um, all that will be, uh, safe, uh, the the traffic patterns will be safe. Now, that doesn't mean that there won't be accidents, right, so there there it's going to be somewhere on the scale of no accident versus some accidents. And anytime you have more development, whether it's additional single family homes, there's going to be more demand for services, there's going to be more accidents, there's going to be more emergency calls. There's going to be more, uh, possibility for fires and things like that, so as more people move out here, those things are going to happen. But with the review process that we have in place, with the fire department looking at it, the contractor looking at it, engineers looking at it, any future development has to be safe. Or we don't, we can't do it, it would be irresponsible.
I think the hesitation here was catching, and I know the last meeting was, nobody seemed to really want apartments, townhouses, or it, that was kind of like a negative for us. So I think that's what caught people as a negative on that one more, but it would make sense, if you're going to have it, they need to have a services available, so. You don't want to put it out in the middle of township where there's nothing there, you'd want to put it where there's already access to services or close to, so they could make use of them.
I agree.
Yeah, and we're not saying there's a booming demand for these types, but there is a demand, as you saw in the survey, a marginal increase in demand for those items. Um, okay, so, the the other one that scored relatively well was number six, was develop pedestrian connections between residential neighborhoods. Can someone explain why you rated that one low, maybe if your group is willing to?
We did a three.
Oh, you did a three, okay.
So did we.
Oh, then, hold on a second, guys.
You guys carry a little.
Well, they gave us three sheets.
Okay, I found the right one, so this one. Yeah, absolutely, okay, so never mind, number two, number two is design residential development standards to be directly related to the natural capacity of the land. Um, whoever scored that one one, can you explain why?
Uh, for us, I think it just called into question, what what is the natural capacity of the land?
What number two? Yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly.
So too ambiguous.
There's not enough information, at least.
Yeah.
So just too ambiguous.
I mean, it makes sunset face value, but what is that?
What is that?
Okay, got it.
Twenty on a natural capacity and then your natural capacity is like ten.
Yeah.
You know, that's exactly the way we read it.
It was a lot of gray.
Exactly, what is the land itself, what can you do on it, is it?
It's very vague.
Okay. Yeah, that's that's great feedback.
Even developmental.
It's exactly the kind of stuff we want to hear, so we can rewrite them and give a chance for you to review them again and make sure that they're actually meeting what you expect them to meet, you know? So we'll we'll take a crack at rewriting that one, I don't have an instant, off the top of my head, way to describe the natural capacity of the land, but, um, yeah, we'll take a crack at rewriting that one for sure.
Well, Nani, it kind of goes back to the maps that we showed earlier, where we have the priority areas, the number one priority areas, that's not the area where we want to encourage residential development.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe something closer to land suitability analysis, rather than the natural capacity of the land, yeah.
We want to limit residential development in the areas of the township and have valuable natural features.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what, that's what is what it's talking about.
Yeah. But I agree, we could rephrase it to be clearer, for sure, um, okay, great, John, can you go back to the next slide?
Back?
Sorry, forward to the next slide, and forward to the next slide again, and then forward to the last slide. Okay, so this is age and place housing specifically, which was identified as, you know, an important thing in the public survey, people want to be able to afford their homes, they want to have low maintenance homes. So I wanted to get your feelings and reactions to age and place housing formats, and on the backside of worksheet two, this is your final individual worksheet. This one is just an individual one, before we get into talking about each of these items, take five minutes, look at the options on the back of your worksheet. And just write some quick hand notes about the ones you do like and why, then again, just gut reaction and the ones you dislike and why, gut reaction.
Can you define age and place housing?
Yeah, so that's housing that's designed to be accessible for people at all ages of life, so that means housing that has accommodations for children, as well as housing that has accommodations for seniors. That's things like a less than quarter inch barrier to entry, things like a minimum five foot wide hallway, or a double height countertop that allows for people in sitting and standing positions to live inside their home. Um, and also age and place housing means housing arrangements that do not require as much maintenance. So housing arrangements that might depend on a broader homeowner to help you maintain that lot, or housing arrangements that decrease the amount of area that you generally have to maintain by yourself. So these are all different types of housing that are considered age and place, and I guess I should explain this, so, yeah, for example, stacked duplex, right? As aging in place, if you are an older person, stairs might not be what you want anymore or what you can do anymore. So having a stacked duplex where you can live on the bottom of your home and enter it easily, but for example, rent out the top of your home, maybe a home you already have that's two floors, is an increasingly popular option for aging in place. It allows someone to stay in their home, possibly even a home they've had their whole life, but live on just the lower floor, right, without the upper floor turning into just an attic. Um, similarly, a cottage court, these are all accessible ranch style, single family homes, they do have storage up here on the top, but they are all like first floor livings. They are single family, but they have this shared area in between them that allows for lower maintenance. This is a, you know, a common space that's shared between the residents here that they can, you know, gather in, but also none of them has to particularly maintain it themselves. Similarly, side by side duplex, these ones are all barrier free entry, single floor living, in a denser arrangement that allows you to share that maintenance. And then finally, this is what we also call a granny flat, if you've heard the term before, a backyard flat, but this is often, um, where someone will convert a garage. Or some other accessory structure that's already on their property into a dwelling unit, especially for a family member to live in. So, I've told my parents already that they can move into my backyard whenever they want to, but, um, the, yeah.
That's becoming quite an option, if you read and look at different statistics across the United States, of course, the question is, then you have a second building, what happens after granny is gone or grandpa's gone? Then, you you don't want to rent it out, but.
Yeah. Yeah, and some communities allow rentals, some communities prohibit rentals and say it's family only, um.
There are communities, there are some communities in in Michigan.
Yeah, but what I want to get your reaction to is the character of each of these different types of things, how you feel that these different types of age and place options might fit or not fit into Holly Township. And that's also what the sheet is in front of you, the sheet in front of you is specifically trying to get your gut reaction on the design of each of these buildings, whereas this one is the different types, so.
So if we like it, you just want us to put like us?
Yeah, add notes. Yeah, add notes about why. Is it the look of it? Is it the layout of it? Is it that you would buy it? Is it that you would never ever buy that and you absolutely hate it because you hate the layout of it? Like just your notes on these items. And you don't have to make notes on every single one. I want to know the ones that you like the most and the ones that you like the least, out of the options before you.
What I noticed with all these though, they're either shared or condo type things. Possibly the bottom right one might be, so they're all shared somehow.
Yeah, and that's part of why we're trying to get a sense of if these were allowed in the township, what kind of designs would be permissible? And again, this is not saying that the whole township is going to be converted into duplexes or anything like that. Just if they're permitted, what would they look like? And part of this is also because you have the best sense of the character of the township and the character of the buildings that were fit.
All the others are steps and stairs and stuff. Yeah, that's true.
You're the fastest one.
Well, I had an idea of what I liked.
Oh, there you go.
Definitely knew which ones I did not.
There you go.
Like on here, you know, because I don't know if you were kind of, but that backyard flat to me would fit in in terms of like looking like a pole barn, which is a natural feature of the whole township.
Yeah, that's true. It does have the vertical board and batten type siding that's really popular in Holly Township.
No, if you're talking like thirty of those in a row, not so much.
Yeah, I think they'd just be homes at that point.
Yeah. But in terms of like those four, I prefer the cottage court look. The stacked duplex is by far my least favorite.
Yeah, that one's also from the seventies.
Yeah.
I, I did pick the ugliest one, so.
The top three of these on this sheet are by far below a one.
So if you use the cottage court though, does that mean you're just using a public transportation?
Some of them do have parking.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, there could be parking.
I see no parking available there.
Yeah, so usually.
It's in the white area.
It, it's usually behind the homes or in a shared lot. So you'll either have it coming up behind like this, but there's like this.
Well, you're not showing me that very well. If I'm an aging person, I have to pull into my garage to get to my house.
That's fair, yeah.
And I only see that option in one of these pictures, so I only like one. That's me.
Yeah, that's fair. Also, I, yeah, I know they don't all have garages on them, but you can imagine where garages might go.
Potentially, this one could have behind.
Only one.
I agree.
That's why I said, yeah.
It's also important to remember though, that at a certain point, whether you're young or old, there is a time in your life where you cannot drive. Everyone has a time in their life, probably two times in their life where they cannot drive. So it's important to consider that as well.
There's a time when they should not drive.
Important distinction.
No, not always.
Well, that's it. I'm thinking, if you can't drive, you still got steps, I can go up steps to all these. I mean, even the, even the one story has steps.
I keep missing, that's one story too.
Okay, is everyone pretty much good with that? That worksheet? Okay, I'm going to come around and take a look at those.
So basically, the three I liked were due to the same reason.
Okay.
Country roll feel to it, and that had a farmhouse look, which I feel blended in.
Okay, got it. Which ones did you like?
Oh, I, so, I think that one, I think some of these are appealing if you have like maybe families.
Okay, yeah, sure. Aging in place is about all stages of life, so.
Don't like that, or that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, which ones? Okay, we're seeing, I'm definitely seeing a concentration of favoring the ones on the bottom.
Just generally, they feel, they feel like they fit the current look.
Okay, so I'm seeing a lot of favoritism towards the, the units that have board and batten or traditional wood siding, for sure. Seems like there's a mix on folks that do like the front garages versus don't like the front garages.
She didn't tell me when she said that, come on.
I don't think it's a question of front or back, it's they have garages.
Yes, the presence of garages, yeah.
Yeah, they had a garage.
Well, this one could have had, so I'm, that's why I gave it half a circle.
And this one probably could have had a garages while pretty easily.
No driveway. Well, I mean, I'm not picking on your pictures, but if she said could have a garage, I need to see a driveway.
Some nitty gritty. But yes, okay, it seems like pretty much everybody hates the top two corner items. The top two corner arrangements, which are the stacked duplexes that have the external entries, just like that one right there, for sure.
I agree, the top three.
Okay, no, this is, this is super excellent information. This is the kind of information we want. So, yeah, it seems like general response.
Somewhere they do have kids or they.
Yeah.
They look like multiple apartments.
Family lives with the mother next door or something.
Absolutely, that is definitely trending these days, yeah.
This down here does have the driveway, the garage is in the front.
Okay, okay, I, I'm glad to see that you all generally had the same character response to this, which is stacked duplexes do not fit with the character of Holly Township as it is today. But side by side duplexes like these, if properly arranged and have garages, would be, would be an appropriate fit if well designed, right? Fitting with that farmhouse feel, that board and batten feel, that, that type of style that goes in Holly Township. So, yeah, did anyone have any other last thoughts on these types that are presented before you today? If you don't, it's okay. I know I've been talking to you for a really long time, so.
The cottage court is cute there. It looks like desirable in some ways, but you didn't give us that option here.
No, yeah, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I intentionally gave you all duplexes to try to hone in on that particular design. Because some communities love a stacked duplex. You guys are not one of them, so that's why I wanted to check. But, okay, great. So I think this is one of the last slides that I have for you. Oh yes, so this slide, future land use map adjustments. So we've, we've talked a lot about today, and I have my, you know, the directive that you've given me to adjust it, but there's two particular areas that I wanted to talk about. One, down here, this subdivision, you'll see, the common space in this subdivision is currently future land use planned as rural estate. And we didn't do that in these other subdivisions. They're either planned as vacant or as residential. I think it would be important to be consistent in how we deal with subdivision open space, either making it all the same designation or making it the same designation as the homes directly adjacent to it. Do you feel yourself leaning either way?
Well, what difference does that make? Isn't it not going to be developed?
Yes, correct, but it would just make sense to make all of the subdivisions the same, and right now they're not. So that's really what I'm saying.
Because the rule of saying, they build houses on it, but it's already designated as open space, they can't do that.
Yeah, it does have like a deed restriction on it, yes. So you're right, it's a bit of pedantry, but I, I do think it should be consistent throughout, so. Mm-hmm, yeah, and the other subdivisions in the township. So, yeah, but yeah, either way, a reaction to either all rural estate or all the residential category next to it, I think would be a good approach, a consistent approach. But, yeah, any reactions to that or no?
I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Why does it have to be developed if it's done?
Oh, it, it won't be. We're just saying, yeah.
But if you're saying to make it consistent, are you asking us to change that from rural estate or what's your?
No, so like, these other is, this open space is considered vacant right here, you know what I mean? This open space is considered neighborhood residential, so just to bring consistency, yeah.
Decisions, are you saying, okay.
It would be, make more sense to have them all be the same.
Got it.
And we don't want to zone them as conservation, because then we run into the issue of like, are we taking away someone's rights to tear down this whole thing? You know what I mean? Like, they have to be something. But rural estate, I think, would make perfect sense if we did these other open spaces as that, instead of just calling them vacant.
So I missed your point. Why wouldn't you call it conservation?
Sure, so this is a separate, I think I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit too much here. But in zoning practice, again, not future land use plan, but zoning, if you zone a private property owner's land conservation or park without their consent, you're taking away their right to develop that land in its entirety, right? And that is considered regulatory taking. So in general, we want to avoid zoning and future land use designations that completely remove the right to those things.
Should we, when we have developers, require them to request that be zoned out if it's going to be used for that purpose anyway?
I don't think so, because it is privately used by the members of that subdivision. If it was a public park, yes, but in this case, it's private, it's privately owned, but permanently restricted recreation space, if that makes sense. It's just a little funky. I think they should all be the same, I guess is what I'm getting at, but right now they're not.
Yeah, there's no designation on it now.
Yeah, right now it has the, like the absence of a future land use category. There's just none for some of these other ones.
Something further goes there, then you would want it to be the same.
Yeah, pretty much.
It won't change any.
Because it's not brand new, the whole thing isn't being redeveloped.
Yeah, it's already deed restricted.
It will never be developed. The fact is, it was preserved through a QD process. And so the deed restrictions are in place, but from the zoning standpoint, it all has the same zone as the adjacent residential use. So my suggestion is you just apply whatever the adjacent residential designation is to that. On the zoning ordinance, there may be an asterisk on that QD that says there's other regulations that are in the zoning ordinance that restrict the use of, of this property. So I, I think it's showing it as the residential land use would be appropriate.
Okay, so the other one up here, this triangular parcel right next to I-75, as you may know, is an active gravel pit. We currently have this planned for single family residential, as we do the other gravel pits that are down here. And again, this is looking deep into the future, right? We know nobody's going to buy this gravel pit and turn it into a subdivision tomorrow. But for this one, this gravel pit is also directly adjacent to an area that's planned for research and office center, unlike the one down there, which is kind of out on its own. So my question is, in your reaction, this parcel right here, more appropriate as neighborhood residential or research and office center, as sort of a buffer between the highway and the neighboring residences? I could see advantages to either of those.
Could it be parkland?
No, because it's privately owned.
Well, I mean, if we're looking to the future though, don't they decommission gravel pits after so long?
That's true, yeah. It's always, in any zoning district, if someone wants to establish a park, they can. They can put a private park there if they are, as the owner feel like it, for sure.
So does that have access on what roads? It's right next to I-75, I can tell that.
Yeah, it has access on Laring.
So it's designated for, um.
It's neighborhood residential right now.
For neighborhood residential.
Yeah, but it's also directly adjacent to research and office.
So it's zone neighborhood residential, but there's a, oh, you know what it is? Designated.
Yes.
It's this lane right there.
So this means in the future, someone could rezonate to neighborhood residential and develop it as that. But that may not be the most appropriate use for that particular site. No, not today, not today, yeah. No, that, that gravel pit can continue. Yes, no, no, no. This is like a hundred years down the line, right? This is what we're thinking about, because gravel pits last a long time.
So it's over here, it's a gravel pit.
Okay, so though, even to the little bit to the north of it.
So you're asking if there's not a gravel pit there, what, what's the other thing neighboring it right now?
Research and office center, directly to the north is that light orange. So, like I said, there's advantages to either, but you could use the research and office center designation on the gravel site to buffer those homes from the highway.
Oh yeah.
So, so the other one that is, and the owner of the gravel pit says, I'm done with this gravel pit. I've gotten everything I can, you know, I want to sell it. So this part here comes out of that. You know, it could be anything, it could be industrial, it could be commercial, it could be anything. You know, if you give that, that helps.
If, if north of it's research and development, then yeah, I think either continuing that designation down for that plot or commercial or industrial. But if it, I wouldn't want to just stick a random neighborhood there.
Well, but if it just has frontage on Laring Road right there, how would it be research and development? I mean, that's just a dirt road.
And I'm not sure if it has frontage on it.
Well, he's saying there's already a portion that's designated.
And 75's right there too.
I'm confused. She said it had front, because it looks like it'd be landlocked back here, so the frontage would be right there coming out, like Paul Ong's.
It does have frontage on the road, basically right next to the highway.
Just on Laring Road, right?
Yeah, it's true. It does not have a lot of frontage, that's for sure.
Well, it goes along 75, should we say?
It's right around 75, on Laring Road, but I mean, all those houses right there are next to it.
We had to go through property there to get through that hill at one time. So I didn't think they had any frontage, but it could have just a tiny bit right next to I-75. And it might be lower.
Well, because there's a, isn't there like a, there's a little road that goes back in here? Because I think there's two parcels right here, because the road comes back in as.
So, yeah.
So that cuts back the two.
Well, we're, we're getting over two hours into our meeting here, so, and then we've got another, we got another new business reports, public comments, so I would like to get this moving, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, there's no decision I think we're going to make on that right now, but I, I just, for me, I don't think we want to just plug a residential neighborhood in there off the freeway next to research and development. I just don't think that makes sense, but I don't think it's pertinent for us to try and decide right now.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, well, think about that site in particular, maybe take a drive by it and just take a look about the character of that one in particular.
You won't be able to see any of it. It's all behind houses.
If you drive over the freeway, you can see it.
Oh, I'll, freeway, okay.
But.
But you can't do that, certain days it's closed.
That's true, certain days. All right, okay, John, can you go to the next one? So these are the last two items that we wanted to cover as a part of the master plan presentation. So the first one was, you had asked about the accident incidents at the different intersections of the township, and we were going to do an interactive SEMCOG map of the accidents between 2018 and 2022, so you guys could look at the different intersections, but it sounds like we're running out of time. Do we want to skip this item today?
Well, we'll save it next time.
Okay, well, we'll bring this back as an item specifically traffic related, the accident reports and the, the accident mapping. So the other thing is that at the last meeting, you had asked us to provide a density comparison for the Riverside site in particular for what the master plan has it planned for versus what it could be developed as under the current zoning of the site. And before I pass out that comparison, I do want to mention, obviously, this is an application that will come before you in the future. So please know that to actually discuss the features of this application would, could possibly violate the Open Meetings Act. So in this point, we're really just going to talk about the current zoning and the master plan density for that site. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, because I don't want to get us into a violation, or you into a violation of the Open Meetings Act, so, okay, thanks Alexis.
So this is the density analysis that we conducted for these parcels in particular.
Thank you.
And the backside, which has the more colorful maps, I think is the most important part. So these parcels are zoned today, a mix of single family residential, rural estate, or sorry, not rural estate, single family residential, a different category of single family residential that's slightly different, a multifamily residential and commercial. And under the current zoning today, you could develop these parcels at roughly 1.8 dwelling units per acre. Under the maximum density of the master plan, you could develop these parcels at roughly 5.7 dwelling units per acre. So the, the last time you saw the Riverside project before you, their average density was somewhere right between that. Somewhere around 3.4, I think, is what I have on the backside. So this is the comparison that you asked for the last time we were at this meeting, and this is what I wanted to provide to you today. So regarding the master plan designation for these, these parcels in particular, does anyone have any questions?
So go back, 1.8 houses per acre was allowed under the.
1.3.
1.3, okay.
Mm-hmm. And then under.
5.7 was what the master plan was suggesting.
Planning for, yes. That would be the, basically the top.
And what they're asking for is 3.4.
Or what was proposed at your last meeting. But again, we can't really get into that today because it will be an application before you in the future. What I'm really showing is the disconnect between the existing zoning districts, which are not reflecting the updated master plan, and what the master plan plans for. In 2016, we had a mission to create all new zoning districts that actually did reflect the master plan. That didn't happen, partially because of the pandemic and also other things happen in life. That means you don't always get around to stuff. But this shows the differences between what is planned and what is possible today. And this can be made available for the public as well. Yeah, so does anyone have any other questions or thoughts on this item in particular? And you will also have the chance to discuss and analyze this when it is given before you as a formal application.
So I guess when I'm looking at this, part one is highlighted in red.
Yep.
That seems to be the upper left where it's like eastern, single family component, this section here.
Yep, that.
So two dwellings per acre, that's what's being proposed in this picture. So these are half acre lots.
Yes, and the master plan has that area designated as somewhere between one and three. Basically, there's more zoning classifications on this site today than there are future land use classifications. Basically, there's more zoning classifications on this site today than there are future land use classifications, if that makes sense. Yeah, so this is really for you to take home with you as well, because like I said, this will be a formal submission to you at a future date. And at that time, I also think the acreage was not quite right. I think I accidentally attributed four acres to one section that should have been attributed to another. So I'll correct those values for you. It'll result in a slight difference, but not a major difference between them. So, um, yeah. Other than that, to let you guys get into it, um, this is the end of the housing discussion, and it was going to be an open, open discussion time. So do you want to have open discussion time, or do you want to move on to the next item on the agenda?
I think you were very extensive and detailed in your explanation. I don't know that I have any questions at this time. I think we asked questions as we went, for myself personally. I'll leave it up to the rest of everyone to ask if they have anything.
No.
Okay, great. Then, if I could please collect all of your worksheets, so that we have them for the public record? That would be super helpful, thank you. I mean worksheet one and two, whoever's got worksheet one.
I think you cut the one of ours.
All right, thanks, folks. I'll let you get on to your next item of business. And also, also on your agenda, I had planned a training for tonight. If you'd like to table that, that's perfectly fine, it's up to you, so.
How long is that training?
It can be as short as five minutes. It can also be as long as half an hour. It's up to you.
I don't have any problem doing that tonight, just, do we want to go through? Do we need a recess? Does anyone feel?
I'd say go for it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're done with, um, old business, master plan review update. Moving on to new business, conditional approvals training.
Okay, uh, did you all obtain a copy of this in your packet? You did?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. So, basically, a few months ago, you had asked for the different types of conditional approvals that can be set when a development project comes before you. I broke it down into four basic types and provided you with a cheat sheet for each of them. So, the first type is site plans. When a site plan becomes before you, the basic types of approvals, conditions that you can set on it, are conditions that are necessary to bring it into strict compliance with the code. And that's why, hold on, I'm trying to find, here it is. That's why I call it code compliance. If it's a basic site plan, it's a use that's allowed by right, you know, all they're doing is the site plan, you can't set conditions for them that are above and beyond what the code requires. But say, for example, someone puts a six-foot fence in their site plan, everything else is perfect, but you only allow four-foot fences, you could say, approved on the condition that the six-foot fence be reduced to four feet. Something as simple as that. When you get into a special land use, you can start putting more discretionary conditions on these approvals. And with a special land use, the most important thing is that the approvals must be limited to minimizing any negative impacts of that land use. So, one I like to use is oftentimes, let's say, gas stations will have really, really bright floodlights and bright parking lot lights, usually higher than what an ordinance would allow. And a special land use can set restrictions on those uses to make sure it, you know, is harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood. That could be, all right, this is approved on the condition that your lights have an automatic timer and they turn off after 10:00 PM, when all business is finished. Or your lights have to dim between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, something like that. And it has to be directly related to a negative impact that the site might have on the neighborhood. Or, for example, if you have a kennel, right, like a, a dog kennel, you might say, the dogs cannot be let in the outside area of the kennel between 8:00 PM and 10:00 AM. Something like that, because it has a direct correlation to the area around it. For a planned unit development, you can go even further and request a public benefit. So under state law and under our own township ordinances, planned unit development projects have to provide a material benefit to the public. Oftentimes, that's a park, a walking path, you know, contribution to the tree fund, something like that, that is a material, you know, progression for the township. In that case, uh, you know, the board is ultimately the one that does the planned unit developments in the township, but at the planning commission, you still see them in their early stages. And you can set conditions on your recommendation to the board about what types of benefits you think they have to provide. So, for example, you could say, we approve of this development concept on the condition that they establish a public walking path around the wetland on the site that can be used by everyone in the township. Making sure that benefit is available to not just the users of the site, but everyone. It has to be the public as a whole. And then finally, for rezonings. So, with rezonings, you actually can't set conditions. The applicant can only offer conditions. That is a restriction under state law. It's a little funky, but it means that an applicant can offer their own voluntary conditions on their rezoning to try to make it more harmonious with the area around it. So, I'll use an example from one I did quite recently, which is somebody wanted to rezone a site from residential to commercial in order to establish a parking lot for their commercial business. It was directly adjacent to it. But, that commercial lot where they wanted to rezone it was right next to a bunch of residential neighborhoods. And those residents said, well, I don't want a commercial development right next to my house. You know, I moved down into the middle of the block, so I wouldn't have to be right next to it. And as a condition of that rezoning, the developer offered to restrict the use of that site to parking, so that someone couldn't come in, buy it up in an Oprah liquor store right next to someone's house. And that was voluntarily offered by the developer. The planning commission said, all right, that makes more sense. That means it's going to be more harmonious with the neighborhood around it, and they recommended approval of that conditional rezoning. And again, we can ask for them, but we, as staff, can say, you know, your development project might be more successful with a conditional rezoning, consider it. But we can't tell them to use a specific condition or anything like that. We also can't add conditions. All we have is what they offer to us. So, um, that is the super fast version of this training.
Definitely, if I could just clarify something. So, ju- just to add to this alphabet soup of, of discretionary standards, the township has multiple types of planned unit developments in their current ordinance. Uh, there's a planned unit development, there's a planned development, and there's a planned residential development. And they don't all go through the same process. So the planned development, which is only allowed under the Fish Lake Overlay District, the Greenchild Overlay District, just goes to the planning commission, does not go to the township board. So that's a big distinction between that and some of the other procedures that are out there. So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, that's great, thank you, John. Uh, yeah, so for, in a true planned unit development scenario, like a PUD, that's where the public benefit would come into play. Which is something confusing about our ordinance that we should probably fix. But, uh, yeah, so who has questions on this very fast training? Yes?
So, as I'm looking specifically at the special land use, and it says minimize the negatives.
Yep.
Now, when I think about this, just, you know, the wording is if it's, that there should not be many negatives at all, because it is special. You know, we don't want to have a special land use with a ton of negatives, or any negatives.
Yep.
So, it almost sounds to me like, I don't know, forcing our hand to approve special land uses, but getting the best we can out of it.
No, you certainly don't have to.
Okay.
If a special land use is not appropriate for the context it's in, and no amount of conditions will make it appropriate, you shouldn't approve that special land use. This is in things that are already generally appropriate, but need tweaking in order to make them fit well. If that makes sense.
So, with special land uses, there's a set of criteria in the state act, as well as in your local zoning ordinance. And you have to review those discretionary standards to determine whether or not that special land use is appropriate or not. And it talks about compatibility with adjacent uses, impacts on future development. There's, I don't know, probably at least, uh, five to seven of those standards. And whenever we review one for the township, we give you an analysis of each of those standards that are in the zoning ordinance. So when you get the, the proposal from the applicant, you get a review letter, and you get our best, uh, best professional review of how that project does or does not comply with those standards. But ultimately, you, you guys have to review and make those decisions as to whether or not it's appropriate or not. So you could say, no, it's, it's dead on arrival, because it doesn't meet these standards.
Any other questions about any of the types of conditions? Okay, fabulous. Kept that very short.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a lot of extra copies of that.
All right, so, that is it for new business. That moves us to reports. Anyone have anything to share at this time? No? All right, so then that will bring us to our next public comment for the evening. So, uh, this is where the public can address the chair. Uh, you'll have three minutes to address us. Uh, please state your name and address. From there, you'll be timed. Uh, we can allow additional time if the board approves, uh, once acknowledged by the chair. So, anyone for public comment for things related to both on and not on the agenda? Yes, sir?
Hello, uh, name's Tom Metz, I live on 3402 Gray Road, or County Line Road. A lot of talk about density of dwelling units in the township. I'd like to note, say I wanted to move into the township, I want to buy one, two, or three, or four acres, will the township give me a building permit to go ahead with that? My reason for asking is I always assumed you had to have five acres and 350-foot of road frontage to build in the township. Is that still true or not?
Depends on the person.
So just to add some context, or like, public comments for, I'll stop the, stop. Public comments for you just to, it's not like a dialogue. So you can ask us questions, we may be able to address them after public comment, but it's not a dialogue time, it's for you strictly to speak to us. So, that's not eaten into any of your time, just wanted to give you some context. So, I apologize for not giving you that distinction.
We're available in the office for those handy questions.
Yeah, oh. Change in, uh, the density that you're talking about doing in the township is not going to be allowed, I might do dialogue again, is not going to be allowed because of the rules you have now, unless you plan on changing the rules. Because, going back to the septic systems, she's right. There's no continuity in the state of Michigan from one community to the other. And I know the state of Michigan was trying to pass a law that would require inspection of all those. I don't think that's gone through yet. I don't know if it's going to happen. But that was always the problem in the township. Density, they wanted five acres, 350-foot of road frontage, because nothing perks in the township. And, I'll get, next thing I was going to say, have something to do dialogue again is. Yeah, I was going to ask about why just that northern section is zoned, not zoned, but you're going to make it commercial, that one little spot up there in the north. Are you assuming that sewer water and gas are going to be brought into that section to allow commercial in there? And if not, then why would you do that right now? But there again, that's dialogue, so.
I think he's chopping them up this section.
The chances, that's a moderate. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am? Take your time.
I just wanted to comment real quick on-
May we have your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Angela Corliss, 3086 Quick Road. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment on the survey that so many of us have done. And when she was going over it, and one of the things was, people want to keep Holly rural. They want to keep it natural. The words conservation and preservation have been said so many times tonight. I think I'm going to go home and actually watch this and see how many times it was. They want things preserved, they want it conserved. They don't want new cookie cutter subdivisions, which is what keeps getting proposed. Also, people do want to move to Holly. They want to move to Holly because of what it is. They want to move to Holly because we do conserve our resources. We do preserve our nature. They don't want to move to Holly because it's going to end up being put in township.
Thank you for your comment tonight. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Hearing none and seeing none? Uh, next is adjournment, if no one else has anything to add? All right, so we'll adjourn at 8:58. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What about highlighter, would we get those?